Keep the landscaping on the road there. When we put landscaping on high range, when we, let's say if you put fountains out at the entrance off the road. We're gonna use recycled water for all of that. We're not gonna use our precious well water for that. We have over, we have 50,000 gallons a day of water that we're dumping into the lake that we could be using. Now, we can't use tier two if it has access to the public.
Yes.
Or if we get those ball fields out front, we said we want to irrigate where the school board property is. We want to turn those into soccer fields or something. You can't do that with tier two. It's gotta be tier one for athletic fields. So again, that would be trivial. Remember, water lines pressurized. Water lines are trivial to run. They're simple because they're pressurized. We already have, the pressure system is set up. When we bought the system from Mustang, we got pressure pumps, we got pressure tanks. We already have the entire system. We got it for nothing, free, zero dollars and zero cents from Mustang. So that's what we're gonna use the recycled water for. We're not selling the recycled water to anybody. There are no house connections, there are no meters putting in, there's none of those costs that you would do to put in a water system to somebody's house. It's strictly a pipe running down the street. It has a tee where the irrigation comes off of it. It's very simple. So getting back to my question, you've done some work.
Yeah, we, I worked for a city gang, so we ran the red water across the street and they had lots of soccer fields.
And it was, it was successful?
Yeah.
Did you have a budget plan? Did you know how much the cost is gonna be going into it? Remember, my question is, did you, did you have a structure and plan and a budget?
I was a grunt, I didn't.
I know. So let me ask you a question. Would a normal town or no, it's gonna consider us, would they lay out a plan and handle the hour? Why are you asking what a normal, what a normal city would do? He's here to discuss the water in the sewer pipe. He's not here to discuss project plans.
Well, I can tell you there are no normal cities, that there are no normal cities. Every city has its warts and it's got its pretty spots and, you know, some people, some cities are proactive, some are reactive. Y'all are over on the proactive side. You're probably not as proactive as Little Elm because they've got more money and they can put more people into play, you know.
No, I'm just asking a question. Would you, I mean, Dan, we, we're not gonna commit anything right now. Let's get the cart, you know, let's get the things forward. The first question is, can we use the recycled water outside the sewer pipe? There's no reason to want the project plans and scopes and costs and timelines and gap charts and everything if the water can't be used outside the walls of the sewer pipe.
Are there any questions about the data and the operation that Mark, the service that Mark provides for it?
So, you know, in the future, in regards to the data and operations, can we get something that we can review? I know you gave it to us last time and it was, it was pretty helpful. But something on a regular basis that towns can be talking about, that we can review in the agenda, that we can email out, that would be quite helpful.
Sure. I mean, we, we do pages and pages of reports for y'all every month so we can compile some stuff and.
Yeah, don't do any more work, it's already together.
Oh, no, no.
We just need to put it out there.
Believe me, we send it to the TCU in every form we can make.
I apologize, Dan, deal with this, but thanks for coming.
Anything else?
A question here?
No, good.
Thank you. Thank y'all very much. And we appreciate y'all. We, we, y'all been with us since we were a two-man operation and we're about 20 employees, we're doing $3 million this year. We have been very, very blessed and it's people like y'all who have helped us out, so we feel honored to serve.
Thanks, Mark. We really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, next up, bottom of the agenda, we have a consideration of resolution opposing Senate Bill 1515 and Senate Bill 1004, which is, Linda? So Linda's been tracking a lot of legislative stuff. After she's putting in her 12-hour days here during elections and putting back the portuguese, you know, and monitoring all of it. The fun things that are going on down in our legislature, Linda has been bringing to us, we get updates periodically which will say, you know, hey, here's a bill that's really a problem. And, you know, unfortunately, we get a lot of those, the bills. Linda's done a lot of time and effort into looking at some of these bills and kind of reading out the ones that are, you know, have negative implications for us and bringing those forward for us to look at. So I appreciate you handing in kind of some legislative function. So why don't you take it from there?
The, the bottom line of this, these two Senate bills that is most concerning is that it reduces the city's ability to manage its own right of way. It gives telecommunications, telecommunications companies all the free rent to get into the right of way and place equipment without necessarily planning the city, the location. It also gives them the ability to place antennas and nodes on city poles, light poles, stop signs, I guess probably not the water tower or the storage tanks, but potentially that, maybe city equipment. And it drastically reduces a cap on the use that the city can collect, the leasing space that was previously available. Now, it's not anything that's actively and eminently affecting our bottom line budget. We're at the end of the peninsula, so I anticipate cell companies and some wire and I might get a boost in six, we hope so.
There is, there was a, there was DSL coverage in the shores, right? So there's some exposure there, but the main team wanted to, or suddenly expand the coverage out there.
So let me make sure everybody understands under, I think it's the Texas Constitution. You can't use city property to make money, to push your pace. You couldn't run a business out of city hall. You can't get to use this building and for free let us use city property for you to make a business, for you to make money. You can't make money off of city property. That's why the, the phone lines and everything, they're putting those on city property. Telephone poles, co-service using city property, our easements, our lightaways to run power lines that they charge you money for. They're making money off of city property. That's why we have to pay franchise fees. That's why businesses that use city property are required to pay for. We can't say it's free. You know, we can't let you use city property for free. It's unconstitutional because it's government property. You can't do that. So what this bill is doing, this bill is nibbling away at that and saying that, in essence, you know, it's your right of way, or it's your authority to manage your own right of way. We're gonna basically let them have free rent. They can go wherever they want, do whatever they want, and you can't stop them. The problem is, it's a tension between where cities are being restrictive and telling them, we don't want you to put the cell tower up, you know, in front of the mosque or in front of the church. Put it somewhere else. So the telecommunications companies don't like being told where they have to put stuff. They'd rather be able to put it wherever they want and go from there. And that's the tension. The tension is, is you can't tell them they can't do it at all. You can't zone it away. You have to let it happen. But you have to determine how it happens. Does the city have the right to tell you where you can put it? Or do you have unlimited rights to put anywhere you want? That's what this is kind of getting at. It was kind of that tension. Did I clarify that kind of language?
So Linda, has this bill simply just been drafted and hasn't come to a vote or anything like that?
Actually, Summer's been tracking, she can tell you the status.
Um, SB 1004 is, was referred to, or that one was the committee substitute, was reported as favorably, which means it's gone through the committee, they've made some adjustments, and they're happy with the result of that. Um, H, or SB 1515 has been sent to committee, but it hasn't come out of committee yet. And then on the next one that you'll be discussing, the House Bill 2485, it's been sent to calendars, but it's not been placed.
It sounds restrictive, that we have no control over our resources.
But in other words, it's got a long way to go before it's finalized and what.
Well, it's up to being voted on next.
Not in the House.
It's not, it's not that we wanna wait until something that goes, we need to, we need to let our.
Or it's not that.
Yeah, we, we still have time to, to let our representatives know your position on this.
Yes, they could put a, you know, one, where our list station is on hybrids, they could put a, something there and decide they're going to install, you know, some sort of cell or cellular apparatus, you know, right of way on the road right there. There's nothing we can do about it.
What's kind of concerning to me is that they come in, maybe like the remote terminal that's by the water line, right? When that came in, we had some say to where it wasn't placed on top of pipes and valves and things like that. They could really come in and put it around on top of a sewer line or around on top of a water line and you don't have to work around it.
Yeah, Becky?
Can we, can the, the city council draft something that says that the city, you know, the council would like some say or we feel we, we need a say in where these things are placed?
I think that's the.
I've already done that.
That's the resolution that Linda, Linda drafted.
Oh, it is, okay.
The, the next one, uh, the four, of, of the next one, yeah, the four state.
I mean, unfortunately, unfortunately, right now, what we're seeing in the legislature is there's a drift and I think part of this due to our governor's bent is that we'll move power from cities and put it with the state. They, they, that's kind of a going trend, that they want to centralize the power at the state level and remove power from the cities. You know, the city, let the state decide who gets to put the utilities wherever they want and, and that's this tension that I see right now. The governor's really exacerbating it, that the governor doesn't believe that the cities should have the ability to, to make up their own rules. He wants to have the state make the rules for us. And that's this constant tension that we're seeing.
Dave? What is Pat Dowell's position on this, do we know?
Summer?
Can I say, um, I interned for President Obama on days that I'm not here in the city. And I know that, I don't know his position on these specific bills, but I can tell you that he did draft a bill this session stating that trying to do the opposite and give cities more right to be able to control what was put in their right of way.
So I have a question. We keep talking cell towers, right? We're not talking about that, right? Talking about 5G antenna, right?
It could be affecting it, but it's also wireless nodes, the antenna and Gary equipment.
Right, but I just wanted to determine the intent on like the village. You know, first of all, you don't like it, Linda, but I think we have bigger issues to talk about than a 5G antenna that's full of power, right? But what we're talking about is one antenna located somewhere senselessly in Lakewood Village that covers only 12,000, so yeah, I know, I know that you're very popular. I mean, we're not talking dozens and dozens of antennas in Lakewood Village, we're talking about a single antenna at some point that would give coverage. I mean, so we give the cable companies, you know, run for the money, right? I mean, the idea is that you've got 5G, which is DVD, video, internet, phone, all kinds of ones. So I'm not for against this, I just want to present, if one antenna possibly, it's less than a six-foot cubic box, right?
Yeah, I think it's a five-foot cubic box that they can put anywhere.
That's a five-foot cubic box, so what's the difference between five and a long, right?
But not to, not to argue with you, maybe at this point it's a single box that is unlikely, a likelihood. Down the road though, we don't know. We don't know whether to use to vote, to boost equipment at the end of the peninsula, to maybe reach across the lake. And that's the problem is because we can't see around the corner, we have to stop the flow of, stop the loss of authority and control now because we don't know what's gonna happen in the future. Right now it's maybe a five-foot box.
Yeah, I would see that.
Down the road it could be much worse.
I would see that as one problem. As equally, a problem would be the, there's no revenue there for us.
That's true.
You have no revenue?
Well, it's capped at $250 and, um, for example, a single wireless node in the city of Dallas, I think current, uh, current leasing is going for $2,500.
Or is, I get it. Or is the, yeah.
Uh, it's just market value.
This isn't a dissonance or a limit. I mean, we're talking about one particular antenna, this is all utility companies on right.
Yeah, yeah. Well, any, any talk.
And I don't think, look, I, I would love to have better cell service. That cell service is hazy as a bag. So it's not a question of, you know, should we, should we have this stuff? I, I'd love to, it'd be great, bring it. Just a question, put it where we want it. Don't put it right at the entrance again. How bad is it that every six hours, there's a guy sitting at our entrance, that damn box with AT&T, always have that big box there?
Now we have to work around it. Any, any plan for the entrance?
Exactly. That, that really screwed up our plan on making the entrance bigger and trying to make a nicer entrance. We can't. That AT&T access box is in the way. So imagine that now, they mess up, it's just not good. I mean, it's, it's, I think that's a great example of something which is, we have no say in that. They put it in the worst possible spot, it's the first thing you see when you come in the entrance. There's always at least one guy sitting there with his truck right at our entrance, fiddling with that, that stuff. I mean, really, they could've put it anywhere else.
That's, that's fine, yeah, sure.
Exactly. Whatever that is, the right of way, I mean, that, that, where they put it is where they're supposed to put it, right? And you could put it anywhere along the line, but I mean, it's, it is the right of way that they're supposed to put it, is that correct? It's, it's, it's in the.
It was in coordination.
It's in the coser utility easement, it's not in the road. It's in the easement, it's not saying. I guess my, my, I was, you know, we had 72 hours to be built. I'm just not seeing this as being a major impact like a village. I, I get, I get your point. I'm sorry, you want, Becky?
Yes, we encountered this problem in London and the cell, thank goodness we don't have the regulation where we had no say, but in a residential area, they wanted to place a tower, a cell tower, which was 60 feet high.
It was 10 meters.
10 meters high. And on, of the corner of, it was public land, but it was square, it was on a corner between two residential houses. And it would have been an eyesore. Now, we were able to have a say in that and they decided then to move it elsewhere because it would have been a terrible eyesore. And I think this is, when you speak of looking towards the future, this is what the future may bring because London, of course, we have less property and so it has to be put somewhere. But it was put in a very conspicuous, um, unattractive place in a residential area.
The place most convenient.
We're talking.
With a cell phone, yes.
No, I mean, here we're talking five feet, right?
Yes, today.
Of course, today. They're all in shrimp.
But inside the bill, it specifies that any poles that are greater than 50 feet tall, we have absolutely no say in. There's no, there's no density regulation.
My home, my home concern is that we've only had a few days to see this. If we had had it, you know, a week or so ago, we could study. Dan, we kind of had an election going on. She was here 12 hours a day doing election stuff. Don't pick on her about the fact that they didn't.
When you look at the agenda, it was the only one of the items on it, was six of us getting coupled up.
You could've just read it yourself, you could've Googled Senate Bill 1004. Is there something you want to get off your chest, Mark? No, don't brag on Linda after she's put in 12-hour days running the election stuff, okay? My suggestion to the council, right? So you don't make suggestions to the council, okay? Just handle yourself. You can easily read this. If you have a question about the bill, you could've Googled it. You have the agenda, what did the agenda go out? You get the agenda two to three days ahead of the time you ask. That's right. You have the agenda on Monday, it should have been four days.
What is it possible to do now? The situation being is it is. What, the situation being what it is?
Yeah.
What can you do now?
Here's, here's the question. So this is a question about local control. It's not about telecommunications. It's about, do we control the 20 feet that are beside our street? Do we control the power poles in our town? Do we control the ability of people to put equipment in our, right next to our roads in that 20 feet of dirt? Do we want to control that or do we want to give that up? It's not simple. Don't think for a second that what you do here is gonna make a difference there. You could write your senators, you could write them, that would make much more importance than putting this out there. Individuals, individuals calling would make a big difference. A single tile, a single resolution, it's not, it's not like the Dallas, the Frisco, they would make an impact. So if you wanted to really make a difference, you know, if you don't like the five-foot box or those types of things, you know, they have the names of the people responsible in the ability to run them.
If we are not Dallas or we're not Fort Worth or we're not, you know, surely they have the same problem.
Yes, yeah. I mean, Linda, that's why this, this is why we get these emails to say, here's something which is eroding your ability to run your cities. We get, we get these and so all the cities band together. We all band together and Linda talked to city secretaries from other cities, you know, that's why we're doing this, it's a collective action across the board. This, this is not something where, you know, it's, it's just Linda sitting here saying, you know, hey, I think this is good. It's, it's a lot of cities, everybody getting together, the cities pull these things up. You know, a lot of times, you know, these resolutions have come from a city and then everybody takes that resolution, tailors it to their own city because we want to show unity, we want to show a unified front. Big city, small city, million-person city, hundred-person city, it's a unified front that we want to control our own city. We want to control our own roads.
Is that what you're going to do?
That's what this resolution says. It's telling them that we want to have control of our own light of way.
It's our voice back to the city. That's something, we're not, we're kind of just, we're going over and over.
And you pass this, you pass.
No, we're gonna talk about it right now. So I'm gonna ask the council, do we have, do we have a motion to?
In the time that we had the pocket, I was able to kind of find the dedication and time period and so I prepared to vote on this tonight.
Okay, yeah.
Very ready and also.
Okay, so do I have a motion? Motion either way?
I'll make a motion that the council approve the resolution in opposition to Bill Senate Bills 1004 and 1515.
Okay, I have a motion, a second? Second, motion a second, hold in favor? Opposed?
I'll stand.
Stand.
I'll stand.
Okay. All right, next up, Linda, I believe you're up again. Okay, so this is 2485. This one is a habitual problem.
Um, I hope you had time to read the memo. My concern about this is the removal of the city's ability to hold an election in May in even numbered years. I, I don't really understand the logic of targeting even numbered years only, but that's what this bill does and the impact is potentially devastating on cities. Most cities have their elections in May. So to force, to, to remove the ability for a city to have a May election in even numbered years, I've played out what I think are the two biggest concerns. It forces councils to stagger their terms, so councils would only be elected in odd numbered years or it forces us to move to a November election. And I, I think that a November election is, is not a good move for a city.
To, to maybe expand on that a little bit, November election for us would be the mayor's seat would be up for election and every four years, the same time the US president is on.
Yes.
I mean, so fundamentally, here's what happened.
So our mayor is going against the presidential campaign. Got a straight, got a straight party pick, it would be a November. It would be a straight party pick.
That, that is a concern, you've got voter fatigue because you're, um, they, they sequentialize the ballot based on race. So we have federal, we have state, we have county, we have.
75 judges.
Yeah, and positions, a lot of people don't even know what those are. They don't know who the people are. Their eyes and blades over by the time they get to a point where they're in the May seat, the local elections. And a lot of people, I did ask for the statistics and I did get them before council, a lot of people vote, cheer, ticket, and then walk out of the booth. And that means you get no vote?
We don't get a vote, we're, we're not, we're not pledged.
There would be a no vote, right?
So the issue, so the legislature years ago, what they did is they, they tried to get the cities to move all their elections to November. Make every election always be November, line up with the federal elections, change the cities. So cities have the option, you could either leave it in May, like we've been doing forever, or if you wanted to, if you were in Dallas, let's say, you move it to November and they'll line up with, you, you line up that with the federal elections and the state elections and it's all part of one great party. That's, that's fine. But most towns, a lot of towns said, no, we like having our own time in the spotlight where it's the city election, it's the city, it's the school board here, it's us, it's, there's no federal people involved, it's just the city. So most cities kept them in May. So we have the line line. This is again, the legislature screwing with it now, saying, okay, then in, in even numbered years you gotta do November, in odd numbered years you gotta do May? You can't, it doesn't work. You can't do it like that. We're there all in May, we're all in November. And it doesn't make any sense. Just again, leave the cities alone. Anybody that wants to go to November can do November. There's no problem with doing November. We don't want to do November. We like doing May so that when you go there and you vote, when you vote, we all just did it. How many people showed up on the ballot? It's right in front of them. Here's the people in Lakewood Village, right?
That's an interesting point, right? So there was only two seats available about it. The son of my vote and Paul's vote then does not equal the son of Elizabeth's and Ray's votes. So that means people voted for me in the, in the seat against Paul and myself and not for Elizabeth and Ray and vice president. And that was too.
Those are called the undervotes. We have five undervotes. Five doesn't sound like much, but if we take that on a percentage, it, it adds up.
What is an undervote, I'm sorry? What is an undervote?
An undervote is where you vote in one race, but you don't vote, you don't vote the full ballot. You only vote partial ballot.
So, you know, one of the things that we spent a lot of time on, which is very close to fruition, is, you know, we're finally gonna be a polling place. We're finally, finally gonna be an polling place, which means next election, you can vote for the school board here.
Our own precinct.
Our own precinct, we actually exist. Every year, we had to fight a battle to get, to get machines because we're not part of the, the common voting because according to county, we don't exist. We're, we're, we're just some subset of the land. We're not ourselves. So we starting now, we're finally gonna be Lakewood Village. We are a precinct, we exist, starting for the next election. It's only taking 10 years.
Thank you.
So we finally exist, starting next year. Now they have to move it to November and bury us underneath all of the, you know, the, the state senators, the, you know, representatives, some of the state representatives and the judges that.
The council of all the sheriffs.
Yeah, all that stuff. Because when you hit that number, we're, we're nonpartisan. We're not a party here. So when you hit Republican or Democrat, you're gonna do 98% of the ballot and then when you just say you're done, you've left us out. We're blank. You have to scroll to the very bottom manually to get to us, to vote for us. That's gonna, that's hard.
And so we have no sense for the rationale of this bill?
I know. Summer, do you know?
It says about that, but. Elizabeth, you have a question?
Yes. Um, so if I'm understanding it correctly, we don't, we can't have a May election anymore, even if we do without the even.
If, if this bill was approved, if this one we do, it's not, it's not.
So it's, it's.
That's, that's why we're doing the resolution is to, to say, hey, this is what we want. When, when you go to vote, Lakewood Village is opposed or in favor, however they vote.
Okay.
I think we like the way it is.
Did, I'm sorry, did I answer your question?
Yes, 'cause I thought possibly, I mean, I read it, but, okay, I need to go back and read it again. I thought maybe we had a choice whether we wanted to be November or stay May, but not do it every year in May, just, you know, everybody in May. That's not the case?
No, you got it, Brooke. So you can, you could switch, in theory, you could switch to odd years only and you could move up what you make. It would disrupt what we do here, or you'd not have a complete council, all six people
and you could move up to the May. It would disrupt what we do here. I mean, you'd not have a complete council. You'd have all six people all at the same time. In theory, you could do that. The council, the idea is that you alternate only half of the time to include a couple of you there. Uh, the only thing this bill says is, um, even years. And again, the whole idea is the major cost savings, right? The, the theory is, what he hears and not, the theory is, you have one election that year. So if this was an even year, then everything would have been November. People would only have to vote once and even pay it all in one shot. You wouldn't be doing double elections in that year. Question comes in is when you go to do that, are we going to get totally lost in the shuffle? Right? That's, that's what the mayor's trying to say is, hey, we're bottom barrel little guys here. Is anybody even going to scroll down all the way down, even thinking about that, you know, Gary and Dan run? So it's, it's a question of, do you want the unique thing? That's kind of what we got now. Or do you want to, you know, save the money, save the cost and drive it to state? In the end, the state's going to pass this bill one way or the other. They're going to pass or decline it one way or the other on its merits. Uh, but you still have control over your elections. It's just a matter of what's our opinion here for some.
Thank you.
Any questions, comments? I mean, we, we, we've faced this before. They did this several years ago. They, they fundamentally liked everybody in November. I mean, no, that's really what they're trying to be here. This is kind of the latest clever twist on the even odd, get them to November kind of thing. For some reason, they just really tried to push this uniform election date in November. Yeah, and again, I would prefer to let cities decide what cities want to do. Give us the option. Let us decide what's best for us. Leave us alone. That's the way I would.
I have a comment.
It's always best to have the, I don't think, the staff with the election. It's always better. We can always have somebody that's a little bit experienced. You can have somebody new coming over and, uh, let her know. I would suggest, you, you're as you would move.
Do you want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we, uh, uh, publish House Bill twenty-four eighty-five.
Okay, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, why come in? Holes in favor? All right, very good. All right, next up.
I forgot about that.
That's all right. Wait, what's Clinton saying? Clinton saying no, it was all motion. Okay. All right, next up is executive session. Um, I don't think that we have any reason to meet. Um, we really haven't had anything happen since the, uh, since the last one. Um, so I don't really see any reason, so we will skip the executive session. So we'll skip reconvening. Uh, next up is councilman staff comments. What is it?
Bill will have something?
This is for me, sorry.
I know, Bill might have on the other.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes. Okay, so, um, so as you know, the, the Hydells do the, uh, the jet ski. They do it for the food bank. So if you, if you, if you participate in this, I try to participate each year, uh, you know, it's a big contribution to the Little Elm Food Bank. Uh, you know, uh, Bill and Lynn over on Spinnaker Rod, they do a, a real nice setup where there's a side of auctions, they have lots of food. And all proceeds go to Food Bank. Uh, Bill will light off fireworks, which will go off behind his house over there, uh, to fund this fund up. So I'll put this up on the, uh, on the board. It's, it's a very nice thing. They've been doing it now, this thirteenth year. So if you get a chance, it's a nice time. It's, it's good to get to get a lot of Little Elm people show up, the Little Elm council members and that. It's kind of a good time to. Me too. I know, I always see Bill and Jane there every year. Yeah.
I just wanted to say, uh, thanks to Ed and Gary for redoing those bulletin boards. They did a great job.
You forgot Darryl. Darryl's.
Well, he was, he did a heavy lift and so.
Me too, I was going to say.
They even shingled the thing. So there's newer shingles on that. They're on my house, so, uh.
No, I think they.
That's really about the shingles.